Okay, here we go. Okay, do we start with a roll call?
Yeah. At 6:30, Tyler?
Here.
Cam?
Here.
John?
Here.
Deb?
Here.
And Andrew?
Here.
I'll press that.
Okay, and I think we just need to start with approval of the agenda.
So move, Zach in.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Hi, hi, John. Okay, so this is a working session. We have two items on our agenda. The first one is with Travis, who wants to discuss some bond refinancing, is that right? And then at 7 o'clock, we will have some members of city council coming in to talk about the Mount Tower, so you have, you go. But at 7 o'clock, we have guests.
Oh, yeah.
You have to watch out.
You guys act like you have to put a timer on it or something.
I'm just gonna be impressed if it's 29 minutes.
Oh, I can do 29. Well, it wasn't planning on talking to you guys for a while, so I thought you guys said you didn't have any projects. This is kind of going to morph a little bit from just simple bond refinancing into a little bit of a conversation about sales tax bonding capacity. And the reason it may morph back and forth is because there are reasons to refinance and reasons to not refinance. And so, you know, the reason to not refinance doesn't, is impacted by what your other projects might look like and the timing of what those projects might look like. So I'm just gonna kind of walk through some parameters, I'm gonna hit some high-level stuff just on the sales tax outstanding debt, just kind of remind you where you're at. The actual discussion on the refinancing component will be pretty brief. You can save money by refinancing net of cost. It makes sense to do it so long as you're not tying your hands in the future from flexibility that you might otherwise want to have with the sales tax. So that's kind of long and short of kind of the route we're gonna go through this. Do stop me at any time if you have questions. So as we move through, again, we'll walk through some just real quick general information. We'll talk kind of the bonding capacity side of the equation. We'll talk about the refinancing and then just summarize. So outstanding GO bond debt. Now, this is as of today. There's two gray arrows there on slide four. One picks up your total principal or debt outstanding, 28.7 million. And then the far on the right picks up your levy rate. So no valuation growth, no prepayment levy, et cetera. Your levy rate would go down on the GO bonds. Now, what we've talked about, and the district has done, is hold that levy rate at $4.05 moving into the future. And you can do that annually as part of your budget through what's called a prepayment levy. So we have that built in into all of your other models because it's important for what that next elementary project, what it might happen, how do you free up bonding capacity to do that. So even though you see the levy rate going down for all practical purposes, you'll be using additional dollars, you know, somewhere in the neighborhood of $225,000 to $300,000 to keep prepaying your existing debt by levying the same dollar per thousand. Now, again, that's part of your budget decisions as we get into the spring. We've already kind of modeled that out, that you'll have the ability to do that without increasing your overall levy rate. So we'll talk to that in the spring. Your voter-approved pebble, you do have a 10-year tax that'll take you through fiscal $28, $134 per thousand represents about $770,000 annually that you can utilize for ongoing needs. Your board-approved pebble that you can implement as part of your annual budget without voter authority is about $190,000 per year. You don't have any formal commitments or obligations out of that, meaning that you don't pay any debt service out of there. This is ongoing needs, you cover your technology, you buy buses each year, you cover your kind of your summer maintenance projects out of pebble. So moving into the sales tax, so this is new since the last time we talked, because we now have a statewide extension that goes out to 2051. So you have more dollars available. Now you are voting your new revenue and purpose statement. Is that November?
It's November.
November, it's November. So what that will allow you to do is to continue to spend the dollars as you have been. What the old tax did, and I'll hit this in a slide later, is it just eliminated your revenue and purpose statements as of January 1 of 2031. So after that date, you don't have any ability to spend sales tax revenues until you've bought down your GO bond levy, you've eliminated your voter-approved pebble. So there's a waterfall of how you have to utilize those revenues before you can even spend them on, you know, your ongoing upkeep or buy a bus or buy a technology with it. So now if we look at, you know, what's changed on that, now the, if you look on slide six, there is a fiscal '19 revenues estimated at 1.5 million with fiscal '20 revenues that are now estimated north of 1.62 million. So your revenue per pupil number has gone from 1,016 to 1,059. Again, that's based on resident students within your district, so the certified enrollment. You do have outstanding debt payments of about $940,000 per year through fiscal '29 with a half-million-dollar payment in fiscal '30. So you do have outstanding debt, but you still have some capacity against the sales tax if you had a project come up that you wanted to fund. So then your outstanding debt, one thing I have noted down there in blue, you see that your bonds have reached what we call the call date. What that simply means is if you had money on hand, you could walk to the bank, in theory. You could send money to the bank, in theory, and pay off those bonds without any penalty. So there's no prepayment penalty associated with doing that. Yes, there's a small call fee, but if you had $8.4 million laying around in your sales tax fund, you could simply pay off all that debt. What the other thing the call date does is it allows you to refinance that debt, again, without penalties, but yes, you still have costs associated with the bond refinancing. So that's another reason that, well, okay, your rates are 3%, you could get 2.5%, let's say, I'm just throwing theoretical numbers out there. Just because your rate could go down slightly, that doesn't mean that it makes sense net of fees to proceed with the refinancing. The other thing that typically happens is when these bonds were originally sold in '12 and '13, we put a six- and a seven-year call feature on them. If you were to sell new debt, it would probably have a new five-year call feature. So that means until 2024, you wouldn't have the ability to prepay sales tax debt or pay it off early, or in your case, potentially restructure that debt without penalty or doing a different type of refinancing. So again, I'm just kind of hitting the overview. I'll talk through a little bit more the merits in my findings. Now, a few things on the statewide sales tax, if you're not aware, on slide eight, I just hit some of the changes that will be effective. A couple of them are important. One is you used to have the ability, if you so chose, as a board, to obligate the school district without any public input on a sales tax borrowing. So when you originally did the high school project, you got voter authority to issue the general obligation bonds, but you didn't have to ask for any voter authority to borrow against the sales tax to fund the rest of that project. Now, you will still not have to ask the voters to vote for the project anytime you borrow against the sales tax, but you do have to go through a public hearing process, which will be familiar for folks in the city government world. Anytime they go into kind of a general borrowing, they have to hold a public hearing. If they want to improve, you know, one of the streets in town, whatever street that might be, Broadway or whatever, they have to hold a public hearing to say, can the city obligate funds not to exceed, they pick a number, a half-million dollars, to improve this road if they're gonna go borrow money. The same will now be true for school districts if they're going to borrow against the sales tax. So if you want to borrow money to go put a wing on at the middle school, you just did that, but, you know, bear with me here, I know you've done a lot of improvements lately. So whatever that next project might be, you would have to give notice, hold a public hearing. And in addition, if enough citizens wanted to, they could bring a petition to force you to actually hold an election. So that's called, commonly called reverse referendum procedures. It's a short window, they don't get an unlimited time. You hold the hearing, they would have within 14 days of the hearing to bring that petition. Now that's any borrowing against the sales tax, including refinancing debt. So you would still have those procedures. The other thing that would happen is if you spend any money on hand, not borrowing, but any money on hand towards athletic complex improvements, and you kind of have to throw aside, you know, maintenance is allowed, but athletic complex improvements to buildings or basically facilities not connected to a building. So if you were to build a new baseball stadium or softball field on ground that the school district owns, and you had $3 million of cash on hand, and they'll say, do both of those projects, you would still have to go through that same public hearing process, even though it's cash on hand and you're not borrowing. If you're gonna borrow for an athletic complex improvement, still just one here. Okay, move through that. Now, one thing that happened when they did extend the tax in this chart is, you know, meant to be kind of representative of what the future amount of sales tax revenues could look like for the district. Now, this would be total revenues, assuming growth in revenue per pupil at the same rates that the Legislative Service Agency estimated. You can see this colorful graph. There's a gray section that represents the amount of money the district would receive. The accumulation of that area would be what the district would have received if the sales tax would have been extended without the property tax relief carve-outs. So another thing that happened with the tax is all that section in the orange gets carved out at the statewide level and put towards property tax for districts that are quote-unquote "property poor." So districts who receive money through the equity formulas, property tax equity and relief, get a chunk of this orange revenue that otherwise would have been going directly to your district if you would just had a clean sales tax extension that distributed revenues the same way that they've been distributed before. So that represents about $13 million over the next 30 years for your district. There's also a small, little tan sliver that is money that goes towards the Kru Academy. Both of those funds are carved out at the top, so it's not like, well, you get property tax equity relief money that you get to give to your patrons, it's taken at the state level and then filtered down through the formulas. So my guess is the real impact for your district is gonna be pretty much zero. You may get a little bit of that money, but it's, with your guys' ratio of taxable value per pupil, you're not likely to see a lot of those dollars.
Travis, what's the formula for the property poor? I mean, just high-level.
High-level, so there's, within your general fund formula, there are two important numbers here. So one is the revenue per pupil funding. So that number is, you know, let's just round it out to 6,700. So that's the amount that school districts get to spend per pupil out of the general fund. Every school district is required to levy $5.40 per thousand, no matter what. And so they levy that amount. Now, then there's a gap, that number will generate a different revenue per pupil in your district than it will in Indianola or Norwalk School District. So because that generates, let's say, more per pupil here, then filling that gap might be $4 per thousand in one district and $6 per thousand in another district. So there's two things there, and so each district then within your general fund is required to bring that up. So where those orange dollars go are to those districts that would otherwise require, let's say, $6 per thousand to bridge the gap from what, $5.40 per thousand generates and what, $6,700 per pupil is, it'll take that maybe to $5.75 instead of $6. So what they try to do is bring it down to equity, provide the property tax relief for the property poor districts. So that's about 60% of that orange section. 40% of that orange section is going to be distributed, the best way to think about it is that $5.40 at the base level is dropped by a penny or two. So you will see a little bit of that, but when you spread that full amount across all the districts, it's just not very much.
So then what I understand from what you're describing is for our district relative to all the districts in the state, we're above average for valuation per pupil.
So you're not going to see probably much of this 60%, but you will get a little piece of the money.
I actually thought we were valuation core, but we're not, you're saying?
Not anymore, yeah. You've kind of balanced yourself up. So you might see a little bit as that number shrinks, because when that gets out to a bigger number, it's gonna be a bigger weight that pushes down that number. So right now, only people, let's say, above $6 get some, but 10 years from now, it might be the ones that need the extra $5.75. Don't get a little bit.
We're gonna have more commercial.
All right. So that's a big set aside, but I just wanted to, while we're here, talk a little bit about that in a moment. So district recently did a bond referendum, you know, it was, it handled the improvements that are in place right now that you're working on. As we sit today, there's two things that we consider for constraints. Now, the first is debt limit. Right now, that number is 46.5 million, you have $37 million in debt outstanding, your debt limit margin is $9.3 million. That acts as one constraint for borrowing. The second constraint from borrowing that is driven by more of a concept we'll call bonding capacity. So in this case, we looked at already, you're not at your 405 levy limit, could you leverage again, go out and vote bonds and borrow $3 or $4 million? The answer is yeah, you could probably do that. The second piece is now with the sales tax extension, could you leverage those additional resources? The answer is yeah, you could probably do that. And your bonding capacity number right now is greater than your debt limit, which is $9.3 million. So you guys could actually borrow enough to exceed your debt limit. Now, there's some nuances there. Does sales tax really count against the debt limit? The law says no. Your lawyer says, we don't know. Actually, all lawyers say, we don't know. So ultimately, we need that to get resolved in a district court at some point so that there's some clarity around there. I don't know if you guys want to be the poster child for taking that up. Might be better to find another district to do it. But you could. Now, the other thing about debt limit is that's always a snapshot in time. So on the next page, you can see, if we assume even a really modest 3% valuation growth going forward, you can see remaining debt limit grows, next year it's 13.6, it's $17 million, the year after that, $20, $24, $27. And if we're thinking maybe that next project is five years out, you have $27 million of debt limit available in which you could borrow, in which case then we're probably not as worried about that constraint. The constraint is a concern today, it's probably not a concern within three to five years. Now, this was, the next slide 12 is one that I presented after we sold the last series of debt, just a real hypothetical, you know, what's the path towards getting to a 2025 project, which we kind of identified as, is that the time at which the next elementary may be a conversation, or the next building may be a conversation for the district? And so we looked at a couple of different scenarios based on valuation growth and continuing to keep your levy rate at $4.05 per thousand, and we're looking at, you know, project budgets in the 13 to 17 million based on today's dollars. Now, obviously, that's factored in inflation, so new borrowing amounts in the 17 to $23 million. So, you know, what would a $17 million in today's dollar project get you? Well, that's a new elementary today for, you know, 600 kids. So I don't know if that's obviously the right of going, but we'll continue to kind of play this hypothetical out. The thing that I didn't update was the interest rates. I was still assuming, you know, the four and a half, we're talking five years from now. If you're borrowing today, you're 2.5%, 3% on your borrowing rate. So rates have kind of continued to stay down, and I would say that, you know, our interest rate forecast five years out looks like we're probably gonna work through some sort of recessionary time period for rates for at least the next 12 to 18 months, and then, you know, then who knows what happens with rates. So that takes us to the next component, which was just a real simple look at sales tax capacity. Now, sales tax capacity for you is based on coverage ratio. Sorry, that chart kind of cuts that E off there, but the estimated coverage ratios that I'm using are 120 and then 125 and 125. So that's 83% of your revenues or 78% of your revenues. In our world, we flip the fraction around and express it as a coverage ratio, which means that I have $1.20 of revenue for every dollar of available debt service. If you were borrowing today, you could go out through 2031, which would give you about $4.8 million in projects. You wouldn't need a reserve fund, and you wouldn't have to restructure your debt, you'd probably be borrowing somewhere around 2.5%. If you're looking at borrowing for 20 years, you take that borrowing amount up to 13.3 million, we would have the need to restructure your 2013 bonds to get to $10 million in project funds. And then in 2020, if we're looking at borrowing out the full 30 years, you could borrow 22.7 million, but $7 to $8 million of that is debt restructuring, so you have $14.4 million in project funds. Did you see the restructure column? On the one, you have to restructure the 2013, and the other, you have to restructure both. So that really kind of leads into, should you refinance your debt now? I'm gonna be the first to say that I think borrowing for 30 years as your, for your school district against the sales tax may not be the best decision. When you just simply pencil out the math of the interest cost on a 30-year loan versus a 20-year loan, not sure it makes a lot of sense. If you look at the 20-year loan, again, this is assuming you were ready to do a project next spring, which might be a little bit of a stretch, but you could access about $10.4, $10.5 million in project funds next spring, assuming your revenue and purpose statement is approved, but you would need to restructure your 2013 bonds in order to make your payments fit. And I'll show you kind of on the next page what that 20-year debt looks like. I'm just gonna have you focus on the fourth column from the left. The main thing you see in those first 10 years of that debt, if you look at the 7, 1, 2020, your principal payments are about 105, 110, 115, 120. And those are payments out until you get past your existing debt, and that's refunding payments that are 165, 165. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm on slide 14, sorry. And so what that represents is you're actually stretching out the payments from your 2013 bond. So that restructuring is kind of costly, but what we're solving for is making sure that coverage ratio on the far right is around that 1.25. So my answer, or the advice I give you on this, is if you think that you're looking at in the next two years borrowing against the sales tax for 20 years, you should not restructure both of your bonds, would only consider restructuring the 2012. If you're thinking you want to borrow 30 years, then I would just sit on it. But again, that's if you're thinking of doing this project in the next one, two, or three years. If you're thinking that project is still a few years out, and keep in mind that all of our previous financing discussions have talked about that project being funded with voted GO school bonds, then all of this comes off the table anyway. But I just thought, we better at least have this conversation, make sure you guys are aware of the restrictions that come into play. Now, if we just go to slides 16 and 17, it represents the savings that's available. If you focus in on the summary of savings from the refinancing, kind of the middle of the page, you see, you know, nominal savings, net present value savings in the 200,000 range. You're saving 16.5% of your remaining interest cost when you're refinancing all of the debt. When you get down to refinancing the 2012 debt only, your savings number does drop considerably, but you're saving about 17.5% of your remaining interest cost if you're just doing the 2012. In other words, the 2012 is more the driver on the savings anyway, so leaving out the 2013s isn't really that big of a deal, to make a kind of long story short. So if you decide that, well, let's just do the 12s now, leave the 13s out. Now, there are some advantages of doing both. You can consolidate your loans into one issue, you get rid of a trust agreement that you currently have to manage that costs you $1,500 per year to manage that trust agreement per issue. You also get rid of continuing disclosures. So there's about $4,000 in ongoing annual cost that gets shrunk down to about $600. So that is reflected in these numbers that you're seeing. If you were to choose to move forward, we could start this process with next Monday's meeting to set the date for the public hearing. We can get the, have the, hold the public hearing in October and be ready by the end of October to lock in interest rates on the financing. If at any time the rates move against you, we'll set it aside if we're not looking like we're going to meet these types of targets. But we've already had conversations with your administration staff, there's really not a reason to not at least explore it unless you guys think you want to borrow money here in the next couple of years against the sales tax.
So, long story short?
Long story short?
If we refinance both Series 12 and 13, our savings would be the net savings of $242 or the nominal savings of $206?
Yeah, the gross savings means what's your cash flow savings, so $206,000 expressed in today's dollars is actually $242,000 of savings, which usually think present value is less. But part of the reason for that is the way that the debt service reserve fund would flow through your cash flow. You have about a million-dollar reserve fund right now sitting in the bank, and we'd be able to release that and use it to pay off part of these bonds. So your new bonds would not have a reserve fund, most likely. So you would be able to take that asset and use it to pay off your debt as opposed to having it, you know, invested at 1.5% or whatever, whatever number it is you have invested. It's an arbitrage.
So the first key issue is, do we anticipate any borrowing needs in the year?
Yep, correct.
And this is where I encourage us to continue along with the annual facility and roll-in projection analysis, right? But the last one we did, which was two years ago, and I guess we did update it a year ago, said that the plan that we had in place, which meant we did these projects now, that elementary school was not gonna be needed for eight to 10 years. And does that mean that there might be something that comes up? Well, there could be, but there's nothing that I'm aware of that's changed from that unless...
No, I would agree with Tyler. I don't think that there's, there will be small things that we have that we can handle through our saver, through our pebble, but nothing significant like an elementary building like $17 to $23 million. And again, I think that that's the outlook that a lot of people, our administrative team have, I think that we talked about that to the public. We are kind of looking at that, you know, eight to 10 range. I don't know, that could, we could have an influx and that could maybe be 7 to 10 or 7 to 9 or whatever, but at least I don't think there's anything big out there. I'd agree with you.
Yeah, and then your GO bonds, I mean, by all analysis, looks like within five years, your own position will be able to fund that project.
I just couldn't anticipate, five years, I mean, that's sooner than...
Right.
We'd be planning, we're doing a lot of pen, so...
Have we gotten an update on the enrollment, or do we need to request that?
I don't think...
You know, that...
Yeah. Yeah, I don't think that we have an update from them.
Not recently. I mean, well, we're coming up on October 1st here shortly, so...
So it'll be a prime time?
Yeah, get your certified in and then we'll be updated.
Travis, does that vote impact this decision at all with regards to you?
I don't, I don't think so.
Okay.
In my mind, it doesn't, no. With the timeline, there may be the possibility that we're asking you to look at a special meeting in late October, but we'll flesh that timeline and give you some options.
So basically, we just need to give you direction, do we continue to move forward with the plan? Do we continue to move forward with the plan or just not do it at all, right?
Right. And again, sorry this was longer, but I want to make certain that you got some context with why we would say don't move forward.
The only thing I would want to make sure is that our constituents don't get this confused with being money and hey, they're issuing another bond, didn't we just do 14 million? No. So there might be something to be said for hey, let's do this until November after that passes.
Yeah.
Create any dust with this. I get that this is a smart financial move, but I just wouldn't want that to be confused.
Yeah, that is a lot, a lot to do. Okay, so do we need to decide on seven o'clock? Thank you very much, Travis. Do we need to make adjustments to the agenda for Monday or no?
On the agenda is an action for to have, hold a public hearing on October 14. Now, that's on there, doesn't mean that, you know, we have to take action on there, but it is on there, so...
And I'm not opposed against it. I just agree that it's a court discussion. If everybody wants to move ahead, I'd vote yea, so...
It is something I consider though, to think about, confusing...
Well, think about it, it's on the agenda, so...
Okay.
So we have another group coming in. I don't want to cut you short, that's not my intent. But are there any other questions, closing questions for Travis before we switch gears a little bit here?
Do you need anything else from us?
No.
Thank you for coming up.
Yeah.
Thank you, Travis.
Nice job.
That's very informative.
Okay, Travis, come on. I'll...
Maybe you need anything else?
Oh, did they say?
Oh.
Good time to go.
I look so much better. I'm better looking than I used to. I look really good.
All smart dudes.
He has a bunch of chairs.
Do we need more seats? Can I...
Not everything, including...
I think we can, do we want to just curve around the corner? We can switch, I don't, that's fine.
So, whether it's...
Don't worry, not me.
Yeah, we're working on it.
You just have to...
Yeah, exactly. We got some fun.
Yeah, yeah. It's been a good...
Everyone handles our problems.
Wait, this is...
We have one more t-shirt, okay?
Do you have all the people that we think are coming tonight?
Yeah.
Okay, so school board is into their meeting, their work session already. You have to open up yours, is that correct?
Yep, I'm just going to roll call, so... Yep, so Mayor Popp, John Anderson.
Here.
Terry Gammehan.
Here.
Katie Jarkins.
Here.
Jamie Miller.
Here.
Frank Rattle.
Here.
First of all, my name's Tom Hacken, I'm with the Ames Fire Department. I want to thank everybody for giving us a chance to come in and speak with you. Again, can I clarify, answer any questions? We're really glad that you were able to get together and have this meeting together and give us an opportunity to talk about the project again and appreciate your already stated support of the project overall. To introduce the team that I've got here with me, a lot of them are the same as what I've spoken with you guys before, but to my left here, I've got Steve Holmes with Raycom. Raycom is the system vendor, the ones that are building out the radio system for Storycom. I've got Mike Mylles with Mission Critical Partners. He's a member of the consulting team that we've hired to help us manage this process, create the new radio system, help us to manage the build-out and the implementation of the system. As I kind of come around, Rob Bauer with Iowa State University Police. He's one of the members of what we call a working group that involves Iowa State University, Police Department, myself from Ames Fire, a member of the Ames Police Department, a member of the Story County Sheriff's Office, and the 911 Coordinator for more Story County. We're handling the day-to-day operations of getting this radio system up and running, communications with NCP and Raycom. And then I've also got Todd Johnson. He is also with Mission Critical Partners, the kind of the technical expert for them that's helping us to keep this project moving forward and build out. I'm going to kind of turn it over to these guys as the two project managers to give, if you want to give an overview of the system. I know most of you have heard this before. Is there anybody that wasn't present at either the board meetings?
Sorry, doesn't have...
Okay.
So we wanted to echo what Tom said and thank both boards for being open to the concept and being supportive. Our impression after we met with each of you last time was that you were open-minded and we had favorable feedback, and we appreciate that. These projects are very complicated. I think we've mentioned to all of you previously that it's a system that's going to be, the permanent system will have five sites, and they're interdependent with each other. And although you don't have to have one in an exact spot, it can't be real far from where the design has it placed or you're faced with a redesign effort to make sure that the performance on the system ultimately will be what's specified. They're going from a system today, their legacy system, which is just bad on a good day. It's not a good system. And the new system is going to have a much higher threshold. It's a public safety-grade radio system. And so across the county, they're going to see a huge enhancement in reliability and safety, not only for the public safety responders, but of course for the people who they're out helping, which are all of you and guests and visitors to the county. One advantage that we mentioned to both of you about having a site on or near where you're at, in this case, the school campus or in the city of Gilbert, is now your buildings, your area is going to have even stronger coverage because of course, five sites across the county, they're kind of sprinkled equitistically. But if you're relatively close to one of the sites that's put in, that's even, as Todd likes to say, even more better. He says it'll be more better. It'll be, because I'm from Wisconsin and he's from somewhere south of Mason, Texas. And my background, by the way, is in law enforcement. I'm a retired sheriff out of Wisconsin, so I feel very connected to the mission of public safety and recognize the importance of it. And these systems, we usually don't invest in them very frequently. They're expensive, they're complicated, and the expectation is that this new system will have an extended life of 15, 20, 25, 30 years. And even with refreshes and technology, sort of the core infrastructure will probably, you know, serve the community for quite a while. And hopefully, because it's a $10 million investment, so if you want it to be a good system and you want it to last. We still like the site here that we had briefed everybody on. We think it works well in the design. We haven't found anything since that that would cause us to say, oh, we missed something, this isn't going to work out. So I'll leave it at that, and I don't know if somebody from the school board or from the council has any particular things you'd like us to cover. We've got some drawings and things. We can put some things up on the screen if we need to, but let's just try to be responsive to your questions.
Can you update us on the schedule of, because there's temporary towers, right?
Yes.
So, can you just give us the windows of, when those would start and stop?
Sure, absolutely. One of the other dynamics in play here is they're using a system today that's not owned by the county, not owned by any of the municipalities, it's owned by a private party, and none of the sites are actually in the county. So that's why on a good day, it's bad, right? You have to have sites near where you need them, and they're not. But that system is going away as of the end of June, or at least parts of it are going away as of the end of June of next year. And since the new system probably won't be built out and ready for testing until fall, Raycom offered a kind of a differentiator in their proposal, and they said, we'll help you stand up a temporary system. They have a couple of towers that they own. One of the locations is going to be on Wallace Hall on the ISU campus. It's already installed now. That'll be part of the temporary system, part of the permanent system. And I believe that the school board, Colonesco School Board, is inclined to allow us to use their old building and put an antenna on the roof there for the fourth site of the temporary system. So that will be hopefully installed and tested and ready for use by the end of this calendar year, but people will transition to it sometime between January and June of next year. And then there'll be another transition, call it late fall next year, to the new system. So the timing would be to be some work on the temporary system initiated this fall to make that ready. Count Wallace Hall, it's already started. One of the four sites is essentially completed. Not all the equipment is in there, but the physical part of it is done. And then we will start down the path of developing the new sites. Wallace Hall is already developed from the standpoint of the Civils. And then there'll be a new site in back of the Justice Center in Veda. There'll be a new site here, hopefully. There'll be a new site down in the Collins National School District. We've also had a very favorable reception from their board. They have some property that's actually was willed to the district and 80 or 120 acres. It's a fairly good parcel, and they use the revenue from leasing for props to support their scholarship program. So, but that site will work for us, and we don't have a yes yet because we haven't put a lease in front of them yet, just like haven't done it from you, but they were very supportive when we met with them. They understood the need, they understood the value, and so I think that that site's going to play out. And then we've had some favorable discussions with the property owner in the Zering area, and I think that's going to play out. So again, this is my, but knock on wood, we're moving forward pretty well. We actually had a couple of original sites in the design that didn't play out, and we had to find replacements, but now we have, we're marching down the path of, I think, firming up our design. Did that answer your questions? It's a long one to answer, I'm sorry.
So I had some questions too, just understanding, maybe a little bit more about what led you up to this site, and I'm talking about the Gilbert Middle School site here, as being maybe what you called a preferred site? And what other areas maybe were looked at? How, you know, what other options exist, I guess?
I'll let Steve answer that, but I'll try to do it to you at a high level. We will always, when we're looking at potential sites, look at sites that are owned by the municipal partners or the partners in the entity. So we looked at county land, we looked at city land, we looked at ISU land, then we broadened that a little bit to, well, okay, maybe school district land, just because you can often work through a partnership and those other entities tend to understand the general good for the community and that sort of thing. And so that's part of the reason why the site up here was located up here. But I think, Steve, there were probably 25 or more design iterations that your engineer went through. So you want to say to that a little bit?
Yeah, so as we're engineering the site, the system is, to Mike's point, is we are looking at property or places that were publicly owned, so all these could be obtained. It's favorable to the system. And then also they need to be physically located and have an area that would support the tower. And a sort of example, an open field is a likely candidate on a piece of public, you know, ground. And so this site was chosen in particular in this area because it provides coverage to the north of the county, north and west, but it also helps fill into, you know, the larger populated areas where the denser buildings are. And so that's where we need the most RF. So this was one of the reasons why this area in particular... So this area was chosen because it provided good coverage. This particular site was chosen because it's a state school.
Can you expand on that a little bit? So there's a bit of a ridge around here that if you're in like a high site in Ames and you look this way, you can definitely see there's a drop-off at that point. So there's a magic line that occurred at that point. And the other part that Steve is saying is there's a corridor in 35, a state park or national park, some park area that was very critical for us to cover on this side of the highway. And so what that did is the geometry of the engineering just gyrated to this being a central mass of a ruling unit site in this area to help with both sides of that coverage. It gave the most bang for the buck for public safety at that point, as well as, look at the map, we're sitting here, look at the road from Gilbert. There's probably some means eventually that they need to get here for their own sake, so it just made sense.
Can you expand?
I was just going to say, so if there was more public land around here, like how big of an area are we dealing with? I understand the perspective of going for public land, but if this was, I think I'm just trying to understand, to make this work, you had said there's the five points, and how big of an area are we talking about?
So the footprint is really not that much. We're probably using less than a half acre of land, including the access road, but the dilemma is working with zoning requirements, depending on where you are. And the counties are the worst. They are, they're very restrictive, and you probably have to have almost a five-acre parcel to get into the middle of it, even though you don't need it for the actual compound, but to leave all the setbacks and everything. The municipalities can be a little more flexible. They do have requirements and zoning boards and things like that, but we're finding they tend to be a little bit more flexible. So in Gilbert or in Zering or where else, or in Veda, you know, with those folks, and they say, no, I think we can work with you. Whereas the county is, they're still helpful and nice and everything, but they have their rules and they don't like to bend them.
Yeah, and I think I was talking, I'm sorry, I was talking a little bit more about how wide, when you say that there's a five-point system and that there's just a little bit of leeway between all those five before, you know, you have to make sure the coverage...
Coverage your...
How big of an area could be considered for a spot?
Well, it's much more complicated than that.
I think to maybe answer your question...
Don't have them now down here.
If you go over to the Horticulture Farm from this site here, just over the Horticulture Farm, we lose the tower over there. The tower that we're looking at for here wouldn't work over the Horticulture Farm. We looked at it over there. So if you're looking at...
I'm not sure I know what the...
Straightest of cases.
Oh.
Yeah, so just moving it, what, two and a half, three miles?
But within, but within the Gilbert area...
So I don't have that into your question.
Within, I would say within a half mile, all things considered, you're probably going to be okay if your elevation doesn't change a lot, but we not only look at the location and it's how they're sprinkled, right? You look at the height, you look at, you don't want to go through or too close to a wind turbine line. You want the microwave, which is a looped microwave, so it looks two ways from each site. The microwave paths have to work, and so, and I'm not doing it justice, it's actually a whole lot more work than that, but it is quite a puzzle. So again, it doesn't, it's not, oh, it has to be exactly there, but there are a lot of factors that go into it, and there are these very complicated algorithms that are part of the propagation modeling that they use. And again, in the end, and I should just say this, we estimated how many sites they would need for a budget, but we didn't actually do a design. We need them to do the design because if we're going to test it, and if it doesn't meet the requirements, and poor Steve's going to have DND up for an...
Yeah. So just moving at, what, two and a half, three miles to that direction?
But within the Gilbert area.
So I don't have that into your question.
I would say within a half mile, all things considered, you're probably going to be okay if your elevation doesn't change a lot. But we not only look at the location, and it's how they're sprinkled, right? You look at the height, you look at, you don't want to go through or too close to a wind turbine line. You want the microwave, which is a looped microwave, so it looks two ways from each site. The microwave paths have to work. And so, and I'm not doing it justice, it's actually a whole lot more work than that, but it is quite a puzzle. So again, it doesn't, it's not, oh, it has to be exactly there, but there are a lot of factors that go into it, and there are these very complicated algorithms that are part of the propagation modeling that they use. And again, in the end, and I should just say this, we estimated how many sites they would need for a budget, but we didn't actually do a design. We need them to do the design, because if we're going to test it, and if it doesn't meet the requirements, and poor Steve's going to have DND up for an extra site in the extreme, in the extreme. And so they're very particular about how they do this. And in fact, we had a conversation about one of the sites moving well, it might go from 95% to 94.5. It's that close of a line as far as, again, getting a good value for the $10 million. So I know we're all here, and the time is ticking, so I'd just like to cut to the chase. But our board really appreciated your presentation a couple of weeks ago, and we've had further conversations. Just, we want to support it, but at this point, I think if you were to ask our board, we would not be inclined to go with this site. So where we're at is, we want to support it, but we want to know are there other options within Gilbert. We know that you need to find a site. But it's important to say, well, what are the other alternatives? Does the city of Gilbert have something that could serve close to or equally as well? You know, if there are absolutely no options, I think you could come back to the board, but we just want to advance the conversation tonight. There's always options, and it has to do with the schedule, and it has to do with the complexity, and it has to do with the cost, we're trying to be good stewards of public funds along those lines. Frankly, we've looked at the lagoon, and we do not think that's viable. If it was viable, it would be very challenging for a variety of reasons. But we've been out there at least three times now to look at it, and we're just out there again. And I can't say it won't work absolutely, but on a list of desirable sites, it's way down there for a number of challenges that would take place. And we're not aware of a lot of other land that the city owns that would allow enough room for it, but we were just not aware of something. And if you go to private landowners, I don't know if you can strike a deal, but you know, you're kind of starting from scratch there. So anybody from the city want to provide some?
Where in the house, Tyler?
I'm asking whether there's some other options in the city, because the school's really not interested.
What's holding you back at the lagoon?
On many things. Proximity to the lagoon, proximity to the railroad, elevation.
What's the proximity to the railroad? What does-
On the backside.
Where do you have to be? What's the basic?
You can't be too close to the railroad.
What's too close? I mean, I-
You have to be at least as far, as in my understanding, at least as far away from the railroad as is the height of the tower minimally. So that's what that asks. The tower can't fall on the railroad. If the tower falls down, so you have to be that far there.
That didn't hold true from an elevator leg. I mean, we've got grain bins and elevator legs right off the tracks in town. And that was never a concern.
And maybe they went through a different route.
Well, they went through the permitting process to build a grain bin. It never came-
My understanding is as to the way the railroads look at communications towers.
With the lagoon, because it's currently county zone, it requires a 400-foot setback or better for the center of the tower to a property line.
Who's to say the city isn't going to require the same set requirements as the county?
So far, I've looked through, in working on the school site here, and with, did you remember name? No, not the city. Sonya, yeah. Sorry. And then also took my information to Save Building, and said, "This is what this, you know, our proposal is as far as the setbacks go." And they were a 200-foot by 200-foot area, the tower would've been 100-foot by 100-foot off of the right of way and the north property line. And the feedback I got was, we don't see, you know, anything that would be in conflict with Gilbert's-
Because it's not written, so we don't have any towers today.
Right, right. So I can only go on what's written, yes.
So I'm not sure you can count on that. When the county's saying 100, what's the county requirement? 150%? Yeah, the county's- And how tall is this tower?
200.
Yeah, 250.
250?
Yeah, more or less. So that should be something high, 400-foot rough over there.
So what's the ideal target X marks the spot on a story county map? Is it the center of Gilbert?
It's not, yeah. I can't say that there's an X marks the spot. When we were doing the propagation study, we found public land, and the Gilbert Middle School had a large open field, and there was plenty. In fact, we originally signed it in a different part after our original discussion with Gilbert. We said, "Well, can we move it closer to the road?" So that still falls within that model.
This general area, it's not an X marks the spot?
Because if we can't make the performance work, all these other issues are irrelevant. So you guys got to tell us what the performance circle is, if we can work with it.
Well, again, I would say within a half mile, you're probably reasonably assured of it. It's still a model okay. And beyond that, you really have to look at it on a case-by-case basis. We have to give the new coordinates and the elevation to the propagation engineer, and you'd have to run the propagation models to see if any particular new spot would work or not.
Usually, like if you had an idea of a couple of sites that appears on the list that you're talking about, then that's exactly what we're going to do, is we'll take those lists, do the model, run it, as well as filter it through your perspective of what's the easiest site to obtain, and what's the, you know, what's the preferred site, or the first listed for a site, we can work down that list. So yeah, just to give you an idea, the whole system itself, it does service the entire county, these five different sites. So there's a little bit of latitude, just happens that between the I-35 corridor and Ames, this just happens to be a nice, and so still just the community of Gilbert is the spot. It's not that north end of the school. Literally, we'll go around, we'll try to drive and search for those types of areas. And that happened to be one of the few places that we said, "That looks like it'd be okay." So if you have ideas along those lines, it's hard to go down the road of an entire for a host of many different reasons. I mean, we're seeing some here. So yeah, if you do have ideas, then we can take them, we can massage them, work.
But to go through the effort of modeling a site, we want to know that there's a realistic chance that that could actually, one, the landowner wants to enter into a lease that's acceptable to, you know, terms and conditions for the project, and it would meet the zoning requirements of wherever it's zoned, and that there isn't something, you know, it's not a landfill where there's no way the geotechnical is going to pass. So, you know, we want to do some due diligence ahead of, other than just, "Well, here's a spot, try this," because it takes several hours to model and run the propagation model, you know, studies.
Which we don't mind making them do.
But I'm gonna say-
But we would like to back within-
Yeah, I, yeah, exactly, right, yeah. If it's a site that, a piece of property that, yeah, this has a real chance of meeting, you know, if I actually build in a tower on it, then I'll ask Matt to run and zone that site. But it was like, "Well, try these six sites," and Matt, uh, at Avenue. So I respect it. My engineers, I do.
Did I understand the school board is having some second thoughts on the location?
I don't know that we had first thoughts on it. We, you know, just had presented the, we had listened to the presentation. I think that there's a number, and I don't mean to speak for anybody on the board specifically, but there are some concerns, some safety concerns, not necessarily. Some may be about the actual tower itself, but also just climbing. I mean, that's on school property. I think there's reason to be a little nervous. I know you have things in place. I think that, I didn't hear anybody question the need for a tower, right? I mean, that's not really up for debate. I think it's whether or not, I think from my perspective, I'll just say that, from my perspective, I would consider that's maybe the last choice and not the first choice. Like, that there isn't another option that's viable. That's where I stand.
I agree. We were presented with, here's where we want to do it, and it wasn't really like, here's where else we looked, and here's why it wouldn't work. And that's kind of why I reached out to the city as well, to see what else is available. Are there other options? Because again, as a board, again, we all are in favor of doing it, I mean, in general, but is this really the perfect spot? Because it wasn't, it was just all of us, here's the best spot, it's perfect, but can we do it here, kind of a deal. And that's why we wanted the city involved, to make sure that really is the right spot.
So the concerns would be some on safety, some on aesthetics, I mean, just-
Right, the heart of town.
Right there, okay, well, there's a tower. The other is just use, right? So will the school need that land for something down the road? Or that was the meaning we just had with on our finance and budgeting and going forward. Right now, we don't think so, but that would take it out of play. So I think those are the three things that, as we talked about it, threw up concerns where exactly we want to know, well, what other options are there? And that's why we'd like to see if the city had some options.
Exactly. So not.
We threw the option out of the lagoon, and we've heard now that that's not going to be an option. But, I mean, geographically, I think that's about the only spot that we would even add close.
Unless we go to the well site.
Which that's even farther to the west.
That's another two miles farther west. That's why I asked you about it.
That's really pushing it as far as the east.
Now, if we go too far-
That does our, puts us into the county zoning as well, so we would need that.
Well, you guys have got zoning issues regardless. If we can't find a spot that works from a performance standpoint, the rest of these don't even matter. So it works at the lagoons from a performance standpoint?
From a let long standpoint, from an X marks the spot standpoint, yeah, it would probably work from a propagation, but there's too many other challenges to build a site there. That would either drive up cost, or might not pass environmental, or all those sorts of issues. So it's not where it is, north-south, that would be probably okay if you thought you could develop a site there with a reasonable fashion.
Yeah, it would be the challenge, one is that it is, any county setback requirements puts it in the middle of the lagoon itself.
So you're making those decisions based on the laws in place today? What if we annex that?
Then they would-
That's my point.
If it was annexed, then it would come under the zoning of Gilbert.
So that's my point. You guys got to tell us what works from a performance standpoint, and not start throwing all these things in place that might be changeable. So if we don't know what the distance you have to be from the railroad is, if we don't know what the distance is you have to be from the road is, but the lagoon site already has an access road, it already has space, and it's extremely unlikely anybody's going to build a house next to the lagoons. So-
That's probably a valid point.
So I'm really struggling with what the roadblocks are for some of these other sites if it works from a performance standpoint. Maybe I'm missing something.
Because, too, if I'm understanding you, because you're arguing that the other pieces are addressable, changeable, perhaps.
They might be, I don't know. I don't know what the, I don't know what the other roadblocks are. That's, and maybe I'm being obnoxious here, but I don't, don't throw out the sites just because of what's the documents say today. Because you told me you don't need this till next summer.
Well, that's true. However, it takes about six months to go through all of the permitting process to validate a site. So once we choose a site, then we have a lease in hand, then we do the geotechnical, and then all of the NEPA, what's called the NEPA shipload, that's usually a four to six month process. So the idea, the ideal would be in this project is to have leases, options lease, as far as the executed in time that I can bring the engineer in to do the geotech, to know before the ground freezes, this, you know, call it December 15th or whenever that happens to be. And so that we know going into the winter that, yeah, this soil will support our tower. So then we can design our tower structure around that and start, you know, as soon as the frost comes out again, then we'll start to build.
Todd, did you want to speak to the concern you have about proximity to the-
Yeah, so I live in a street with trees, some chemicals are used in those plants. And in other locations, we've seen it be caustic to the electronic equipment they have on the tower. And it ages it within years, makes it very unreliable.
It's sort of full of you, there's no chemicals.
There's no, there's no cost account, if let's put it here, breakout and stuff, it's natural. And there's no plan to make it.
Which is why nobody wants to be there.
So a question, and so to address a question that was brought up as far as the safety, as far as somebody climbing this tower, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't assume this is just a tower that's sitting out in the middle of nowhere that's not-
It's fence.
Exactly.
You can do some landscaping on the bottom if that's required. Of course, they're not going to hide the 250-foot tower, but you can do that. But the only place we think out there that might work for a combination, and of course, your setback would be close to the line, this sort of, I'll call it, next to the generator, kind of in that corner where it's a little bit higher and we're just guessing, but that was about, if you didn't have to worry about a setback from the property line, that might have been about the only place there that you could took the site in. But it would work by the county rules, so you'd have to-
Yeah, it would definitely not-
You would have to annex, that would have to-
It would have to fall under city.
Or would your annexation process, how long would your annexation process take? What do you think?
Months.
Couple of months or?
Months. Not days or weeks, not years, months. But we shouldn't have any pushback in that area because it's out of the lagoons and-
And you guys own that property.
But there's some other pieces in play here based on setbacks. And I don't know if you can assume 100-foot setback. Those are some issues we have to deal with.
Yeah, I think you'd probably be lucky to have, if that fence line is the property line, you maybe only have 25 or 30 feet of setback if you put it up in that corner.
But who's to say we can't work something out with that landlord? I, I'm just, I just would like to know where it can be, and then let us deal with what the potential roadblocks are. Maybe we can't get past them. But I think it's kind of short sighted to throw out sites today just because the current conditions don't all line up today that we can do it if we had it. I mean, do you have leases in any of these other sites today? Probably Wallace Hall, and probably Nevada. The other two sites, have you got leases in place?
That side, no. So I think what you're hearing is the district fully understands we need this. We're not inclined to say, "Well, let's just go do the middle school." So we like to see if there's some other sites that would work. And if I'm hearing from the city, you think you could work around some things that I guess we'd like to have that explored, rather than assume that we do it at the middle school.
I think others can speak up, but I would prefer that, possibly, rule that out. Those things be ruled out. That's my own personal preference, and I'm not speaking for others. So they might feel otherwise, but.
I would agree. Yeah. I just want to see what was out there, and I don't want to look back in 20 years and think, "Who the hell put a tower in the school that land?" I think, "Why would they do that?" And that's just, and they're not saying it's, I just want to make sure we went through all the options, what's available, what's out there. And if it's the only place that works because of everything else, so be it. I mean, we're not going to, we're not going to hold this back, but we want to make sure we do the due diligence to make sure it's, with everything available.
I could, I could not say no and not let this happen, but I just would like to know that there's, we've done the due diligence on that other site.
And you all are close to knowing, closer than any of us are to knowing property owners. So if you think there's a willing property owner who's, would be supportive of the concept and, you know, work with the group for a reasonable price, that certainly-
I'm just going to throw this out there. There are going to be two sites that are even going to be of potential, and that is where you had planned for the lagoon. I don't see anything to where we're going to have a landowner come and say, "Hey, I live at 316 schools, so we put it in my backyard." Because we will never, it's not going to happen, even if that landowner wanted to do that.
But if you want a three-quarters mile north, or if you want, oh, you mean, right?
And there's really, there's really nothing in town that we have outside of these two spots that have been mentioned, unless there's something else. I don't realize, you know, so.
It wouldn't have to be in the city limits properties.
But is it with a landowner? Is that, yeah, I understand, I understand. But it's with the landlord, it's up to you, yeah, I understand, I understand. Does anybody else have any other questions maybe to present? I know, Kim, you had, you didn't have a chance to hear this before, so.
No, I think, I mean, there's all kinds of.
You guys, Andrew, anybody else have any other questions? I, I don't know, I don't want to keep people here, I understand there's lots of questions and there's just unknowns we can't solve here tonight. I think from my perspective, it's about getting all of the people in the room at the same time so we all hear the same thing, and I really appreciate everybody taking the time to do that. I feel, I feel better, I think we're all at least on the same page and we understand, maybe? I don't know, given it's a working session, it's not much to discuss, but.
Do we, do we know for a fact what the railroad requires setback wise? You said it's double the height of the tower, is that correct? Or just that the tower doesn't fall onto the track, which would make it two-hundred?
Well, they have a right-of-way alongside the track and so the tower can't actually fall onto the right-of-way. And I'm not sure what the right-of-way is. And I think that, I think that's a national standard.
It is, yeah, but I don't think that it's going to be two-hundred feet, which is going to push a four-hundred-foot setback.
Well, you, I mean, you drop a line up from the center of the rail on the triangle piece, I'm talking on the southeast corner of the lagoon property. I mean, you get four-hundred-and-forty feet away and you're still on what I call the high flat of that property. So I.
You're talking about that immediate, what I would call the northwest corner where you drive on.
No, I'm talking the southeast corner.
Southeast. But that's southeast corner, yeah, when we look at that, that geographically had some. Yeah, southeast corner definitely had some issues with, even wondering if it would pass geotech by a little.
Steve, what's your, what's your finished footprint?
Fifty by fifty.
Does it have to be exactly that or can it be sixty or?
A lot, I mean, the fifty by fifty footprint allows for the story com structure plus the ability that if a self-carrier wanted to come into that compound. If that is never going to be a possibility or if it was the case that, well, if somebody wants to go on this tower, they're going to have to spend a lot of money to stay in the compound. So in that case, you'd probably look more like forty by forty footprint, more or less? You have to have enough room so you can get all the equipment in there, LP tank has to have.
So there's a shelter on the ground next to the tower that houses.
Would forty by sixty work? Can it be more rectangular than square?
It can't be a lot, you know.
Within, I mean, you can't, obviously you can't write, go to thirty by seven, it gets too narrow.
So fifty by fifty is kind of that starting point and you can squeeze it, either way.
And you can put cell, cell tower equipment on this tower?
There is no plan for that now, but technically you could.
So the fifty by fifties is kind of that basic cookie cutter print, that, okay, this is where we're going to start. And if it needs to shrink or grow, either way. The fifty by fifty allows for the shelter, they have room in front of the door, a generator, and then LP tank is the biggest thing, is it needs a ten-foot radius, spark radius for the structure or for the building.
That's from the generator, that's a fuel source through generated LP?
Correct, yeah, just. Or at least that's what's claimed.
As opposed to diesel?
Yeah, we typically like LP just because it doesn't have the spore-related issues. And that's not to say that we haven't put in diesel where it's required. Some local fire departments or codes, we will not allow LP. And that's, in those cases, then we'll use diesel, but LP is typically what we use. We've done both.
It sounds to me like there's some, some questions to be answered, right? Fair, I mean, fair enough to say, to say that there's some things we don't know, that we can't say for sure that the school, middle school site is the only site that will work, right?
Well, I think what I'm hearing to conclusion, Deb, is the school district is saying, we want you to pursue other sites. And we would love if the city, if the city had a site that would work. And please do that and come back with what you found, right?
Yep, exactly.
Does anyone, I mean, because I, and not that I'm a zoning expert, but I've tried to do this, much due diligence on the city of Gilbert zoning as far as setbacks, and I have not found anything or found anything that would indicate that there is an explicit setback requirement for towers. So there's none, so. So property within the zone Gilbert has a little bit more flexibility as far as, okay, where can we put the tower? But it would have to be property or, you know, zone of Gilbert.
So Tom, does that give you your group direction on where, from the school board's perspective, that they would like to see, exploring some of the options that the city has? I don't know what those are. I want everyone to know, though, we weren't out soliciting anyone to come in with a tower to the district. That you guys talked to us about.
We can't, we can't.
We're not a tower broker anymore. But, you know, we also work together with the city, so we want to make sure that if you guys can accommodate that, that would probably be, I think, what I hear some of the board members, the board members for the school district anyway, saying.
Yeah, no doubt, we came to you, it was the ideal location that we're listed at for the location.
So we'll certainly do some additional outreach. There might come a point when we come to you or come to the city council with some annexation thoughts or plans or, you know, if we are able to locate a landowner that would allow annexation and get something acceptable that wouldn't put us in the middle of a field that follows the story county zoning, that's something we're going to request and go down that process.
Well, it's true that we don't need these towers until next summer. Time is of the essence for us to be getting these nailed down. So we do need to be getting some pretty good ideas of what we're doing and get at least some lease options in place, and that's what we're trying to do. And we appreciate the honest discussion, that's what we were here for.
Absolutely, same, definitely.
We don't want to do what's wrong for you either. So we're glad to hear the.
Glad.
Hear this at this point.
Yes, absolutely, yes. Appreciate that.
Yep, okay.
Thanks everyone, we appreciate it. So moved.